You know, things that we use like One Emeryville with the capital E.
Yeah, that's, let's see, that's what I default to.
The City Council Successor Agency and Mesa have begun their closed session meeting. We are currently in recess on the closed session.
Okay, so this takes us to the Successor Agency regular meeting. So I call that to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Potts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bouters.
Here.
And Mayor Donahue.
Here. Public comment for consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Sorry.
Mr. Carpio.
I would like to object to 10.8. Thank you.
Okay, that's the next agenda. Any further public comments about the successor? Okay, seeing none, any ex parte communications about this agenda? Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Potts, seconded by Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouters.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye. That concludes this meeting. Now we're on to the regular council meeting. I call this meeting to order, and instead of our normal oath and song, I want to substitute something that is an acknowledgement and will include a moment of silence, and I'd like Vice Mayor Bouters to talk about this.
Thank you. I asked the mayor to consider in lieu of a song today, a moment of silence. Some of you know, I previously worked for the government of the U.S. Virgin Islands, and as we sit here tonight, the island of St. Croix is being hit by a category five hurricane. I spent most of the last three days talking to former colleagues and neighbors who were very scared, and so I thought it might be more appropriate to recognize that. And I would also like to ask that we adjourn in a moment of silence for the people in Mexico City.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just hope that those people on St. Croix survive. It's pretty serious.
I went through a category one hurricane, and I thought my life was over, and so I think anybody going through a category five hurricane in the middle of the night has a really very difficult evening ahead of them, so.
Can we have an approval on the final agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Potts, seconded by Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouters.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye. No special orders of the day. Are there commission or committee vacancies?
Sorry about that. There are the same that I announced last time. Tonight you will be doing interviews and filling a vacancy on the Budget Advisory Committee, and today we began to publish and tweet and newsflash the vacancy that we will have on public art. That application period is open, and you'll fill that vacancy at a meeting in November.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any council member special announcements? I'd like to say that I am going to be working to have our city potentially qualify for a grant from the California Energy Commission so that we might become a pilot city for creating a microgrid. And to do this, I need to go with the people that know a lot about the technical side of this and try to get businesses and members of our community who have regenerative power, like solar power, perhaps even AC Transit. They generate hydrogen. These kinds of power sources can be unified and create a microgrid, which means that the power is exchanged. We would create a market for Emeryville-generated power. And in theory, this is how electrical distribution and creation of power will be done more and more in the future for all cities. That the cheapest power will be the local power, and then power gets transmitted from further away. And we have an opportunity to do this, and I'm going to be going and knocking on doors of companies like IKEA, who already has solar power, Clif Bar. The city of Emeryville has a lot of solar power, and other companies in our town. So I just wanted to say that'll be happening, so you might see me walking door-to-door around town, knocking on people who would like to be a part of this idea. And this is coming up, this application will be due in the near future. Public comment for consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I have an ex parte, oh, I'm sorry, I keep, mine's screwed up. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mine's on order. Never mind.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is André Carpio, and I want to object, and for the record, against the resolution 10.8 for the sea rise in level. And this is, I mean, if it's something that ignorant play with, it's okay, but I just don't agree with. If you study astronomical physics, you will know that all that is nonsense. There is no such a thing as sea level, and the ice that is melting is evaporating. If you know basic chemistry and the physical chemistry of water, you will understand that unfortunately 99% of the people do not, and so they believe any kind of quack. And there is enough of this charlatan around me that I heard and that I'm victim of. And one of them is my house, hazard to life. What about those people who are backies with the hurricane? Is that hazard to life? I mean, I'm calling for common sense here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
A couple of months ago, I gave a gift to the city of Emeryville. You may remember, it was a flag, and it was a Black Lives Matter flag. And I think, at the time, I said I think that we should be flying this flag on the flagpole right out in front of City Hall here. Currently, we fly a U.S. flag and a state-of-California flag, and we commonly fly a rainbow flag. And I think that we should fly a Black Lives Matter flag because I think it's apropos to the times we live in, and Emeryville specifically is rapidly gentrifying. African-Americans are being chased out of our town. It's a symbolic thing, but we engage in symbolic recognition a lot in these chambers. So it seems to me that this is one that we could, something we could do that's really easy, and it at least lets people know about our values. So I gave the gift to the city of Emeryville, presented it to the city clerk with hopes that you guys would fly it someday. And it hasn't flown yet. So now I want to know, if you have no intention of flying the flag, the gift of the flag I gave you, the Black Lives Matter flag, if you have no intention of flying it, well, I would like to have the flag back, because I'll fly it at my home. If you have intention of someday flying the flag, well, I'd like you to keep the gift and fly it. But as I said, I would like, so I'd like to have you to present some direction to the city clerk, so she might give me back the flag if you don't want to fly it, or keep it if you do want to fly it. So I would like, I would appreciate if you would offer some direction to the city clerk on this matter. Thank you.
Anyone else? City manager report.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Ex parte communications.
I have one. I spoke with Tim Bacon from the Public Market regarding item 11.1.
Anyone else?
Nope.
No.
Consent items. I would like to pull 10.8 for an acknowledgement and a discussion of it.
I move the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bouters, seconded by Councilmember Martinez to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 10.8, which is being pulled for further discussion. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouters.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye. 10.8 is a resolution in support of the Citizens for East Shore Park's Resiliency Shoreline Program. It's conceptual support and to raise awareness about sea level rise. And sea level has actually gone up one foot since the 19th century. Measurable, almost all scientists agree to it. There's, the average consensus is by 2,100 that we will have, I mean, this is an aggregate of many scientists, saying that we'll have a two-meter sea level rise. And I am for supporting their awareness about this. And the president of the East Shore Parks Organization, Shirley Dean, came to visit me and talk to me about it, and she showed me a map of what two meters means in Emeryville. And I'm sorry to report, Vice Mayor Bouters, that you'll be in a flood in front of your house. And this sea level rise also would start to soak our new park that we've scheduled to be built at Sherwin-Williams. It's a little disturbing. I mean, the odds are, I'm not going to be here. You might be here. But I think that this is worthy of support and that I think our city should consider sea level rise going forward in how we build our city in the future and consider this as a factor. And there are many other cities around the bay are embracing this idea and studying it for, and planning for it. And I think it's worth our while to participate with these other cities about it. They are going to come to other cities and ask for a small contribution of some amount of money in the future to further this program. But this is just, this is not about that. This is about asking whether we conceptually support it. And I don't see President Shirley Dean here. She was going to talk about it, but she's probably stuck in traffic. So I just want to say that this is a worthy item.
Okay, so.
Thank you for bringing it forward, Mayor. I'll move that item.
I'll second.
Since we pulled it, should we have a public comment on this item, please?
Oh, yeah, we should. Public comment on this item?
I want to repeat my objection to the sea rise level. And I don't care what the scientists say. Many scientists get to the top level without being aware of the basics of many other things. And I'm not questioning that. What I'm saying is that this is career. This has been carried on for a while, and this is part of an area of pollution that I did study when I was making my thesis. And as far as I'm concerned, it's all quack, you know? And the committee, you may agree and all that, but to me, it's nonsense. This, that the sea has rise one foot in a century. You don't know if the ground has not been sinking, like in Hawaii. The ground sink over there, so the sea rise level, of course, you know? So you don't know if this coast here, with the plate, if it's not sinking. What about going up? Are you going to say, oh, the water evaporate? No, we have to face the sea level drop? I mean, you know, there is something that is absolutely wrong here. You cannot induce people believing something that some people wants to be the center of the attention by being scaremonger, disaster monger. And this is going to happen, and this is going to happen, and my house is going to collapse, and it's danger to life. Two years ago, imminent collapse. I mean, come on.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Louise Engel at One Captain Drive Number 456, resident Emeryville. Actually, I'm a member of the American Environmental Professionals, and at our conferences past May, that was a conference track where we dealt with water issues. And I agree, the scientists, especially those who are knowledgeable about the San Francisco Bay, do agree. I don't quite recall the footage, but I remember it was going to be anywhere from six inches to a foot within the near years. And at Watergate, we're actually having to undergo significant changes to our streets and utilities and such below that. And one of the factors that the engineering firm is looking at is how do you then also deal with that sea level rise and change?
Nonsense.
Anyone else?
My name is Renee, oops. My name is Renee Terle. I'm also French, okay? I think it's very simple to just get a globe of the earth and see how much water there is, okay? And then you will see that there's very little land. If you look at it the right way, you will see that the Pacific Ocean is about half of the surface of the earth, okay? So think that that water is getting warmer, it expands, okay? So it's going to keep on expanding unless we do something to cut down on the heat that is being accumulated, okay? So that's very simple. It's physics, and that's a scientific fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We had a motion and a second. Moved by Councilmember Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouters.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. If that's okay. We approved the final agenda, but I wanted to know, city attorney, if there's a motion to reconsider an item like the final agenda, does that require a motion? I see all three people who applied for item 12.4, which is very deep into our evening, sitting here, and it is not a very long item, the appointment to the business representative to the Budget Advisory Committee. I think out of respect for the time of those three people, is that possible to reconsider the agenda, to move that item forward for their benefit?
It is possible to reconsider since the motion to adopt the final agenda was on a 5-0 vote. Any one of you can introduce a motion to reorder the agenda?
If you make a motion to reconsider followed by the new motion, is that correct?
You would introduce a motion to reorder the agenda as you propose.
Oh, okay.
And then once you voted on that, then you can then take those agenda items as you have reordered them.
Okay, I would like to do that, Mr. Mayor, if you'd allow that. I'd like to make a motion to reorder the agenda to now hear item 12.4 and then continue the agenda as scheduled.
I'll second that.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bouters, seconded by Councilmember Medina to reorder the agenda to hear item 12.4 first and then continue in the normal flow of the agenda. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Potts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouters.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward to that part of the agenda, 12.4 Resolution. The City Council, the city of Emeryville, appointing someone as our new business representative to sit on our Budget Advisory Committee. And we have, sorry. First up is first applicant. Nathaniel Centeno. Would you be willing to come forward and say a few words?
Good evening. I think my application for the position just shows that I want to contribute everything that I can to the city of Emeryville. I currently manage Bay Street for Madison Marquette and UBS. I do not live here, but I've been here a year, and I've seen, you know, I've kind of thrived here, I've eaten here, I've worked here, and I've seen the type of city it is, and I've seen the type of people that are involved and that are making the city what it is, and I think I'd like to be a part of that. I also want to take the opportunity to say that I'm actually honored to compete with the other two applicants. Anytime you can compete with somebody like Louise, who has worked for the Port of Oakland, and then anytime that you can compete with somebody that's, would probably be a great dinner party guest, because he's been robbed twice, he's jumped out of a perfectly good plane, he's done a lot of things. So I think I'm kind of honored to compete with those guys, so that's, I'm unaccustomed to doing this type of speech because I haven't applied for a position like this before.
Thank you. I guess we're, do we have any questions for Nathaniel?
Do you also serve on the TMA?
I do serve on the TMA right now, yes.
Mr. Centeno, can you tell us how your potential work on this committee might parlay into the success or failure of your daytime job?
Yeah, well, I think our, obviously, our goals are aligned, and I think my participation in this will allow us to both work together towards those same goals. Obviously, Bay Street, I am fully invested in Bay Street, and being able to share my time and thoughts and expertise in finance would be, I think, helpful to the city and helpful to all of its stakeholders.
Can you tell us a little bit about your experience with finance as the manager of Bay Street?
Well, so my experience is mostly in the private sector. Obviously, I've managed shopping centers for about 14 years for a lot of public REITs and a lot of other private developers. My participation with cities and municipalities, right now, I've been a part of economic development for the city of Gaithersburg. I've been on the board of directors for the city of Gaithersburg's Police Foundation. And I've also done some work for the city of Henderson when I was in Vegas. And I also worked on the Health Committee for Southern Nevada Strong, which actually did a lot of work for creating a lot of health programs for the city of Henderson and the city of Las Vegas. So, you know, specifically towards public finance, I don't have specific experience in that field, but I do believe my experience in, you know, trying to be efficient in expenses and looking at ways to do things more efficiently, do things in a way that makes sense so that we can have a responsible fiscal practices. I think that's something I can contribute.
Thank you.
What is your experience working with labor unions?
With, I'm sorry.
Labor unions?
My experience mostly has been from the side of speaking with labor union leaders about labor unions protesting on my properties. I think that's been the extent. I don't have specific experience further than that.
If appointed, is there any one particular policy or budgetary thing that you would want to change, and what would that be?
I don't know what that would be right now. I don't have a specific, I think I'd like to look at how some of the labor policies do affect maybe bringing in businesses into Emeryville and how we can improve those so that we can have a great balance between providing a great work environment for employees and then also bringing in businesses that aren't as big of fans as we feel they should be in terms of some of the policies that we have. As far as the budgetary policies, I don't have anything specific that I would need to look more into those items, and I have not been able to do that yet, so.
Thanks.
I just had a question, a little bit about your field and Bay Street that really affects our city. We're seeing a little bit of a downturn in retail sales. And certain kinds of retailers are really doing well, like, say, Apple, for example. The per-square-foot numbers out of that store over there, they're amazing. But then other retailers really are just, it looks like there's no end in sight for a reduction for the majority of retailers. Do you, is there, you know, this is like almost a national issue for the retail world.
It is, and our industry is, has looked at it from every angle, and everybody's come to the conclusion that the amenities and the experience that a customer may have at our properties is key to the success. experience that a customer may, may have at our properties is key to the success. While there are a lot of articles out there that claim a lot of the, and report a lot of the closures across the nation, I think it was last reported, there, there are about 8,700 stores that are going to close across the country. If you look at the net, the net is actually positive.
That net sales being positive mean?
Well, yeah, certain pockets and certain, certain tenants and retailers and certain products are doing well, while some are not. And I think you have a situation where a lot of the retailers were overbuilt over the past couple of decades and they just weren't able to sustain it and, and they haven't changed and they haven't looked at their business model and adapted at all to the experience and technology and some of the other items that make a retailer successful today. So, it's really important for us from a landlord standpoint to, and Tim can attest to this from public market, but who we target is going to, you know, is very important in, in our success and hopefully partnering with the city and any other stakeholders in order to get these companies to open stores and, and restaurants and other venues for, for our residents, I think that's, it's key. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Louise Engel.
Yes, did you want the remarks first?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I did talk with a couple of the committee members and they've advised me, a lot of hard work if I get on this committee and I would say I'm definitely willing to do that. I can carve out the time, I have flexibility in my own business. I also have the training and expertise to bring to this task and I've been active on and off at various city issues through the years. I've been here for over 22 years, a city business license for 21 years.
I'll ask the same question of everyone. Is there any particular policies or allotments of funds that you would really want to change if you got this position?
I don't believe I have enough information in sense of background, but I was really pleased when I was reviewing the city manager's report on how the city went about balancing its budget. I was disappointed to see that a couple staff positions had to be cut. That, it's, it's very hard because that's a real resource that we have within our city. Those are the hard decisions though that a city does have to make and I'm glad that when you do kind of finalize that budget, that, you know, you do make those hard decisions. The other thing I saw with interest was that you're definitely trying to recoup your, the funds that you achieve from either permitting or building permit reviews, those sorts of things and that Charlie Bryant was having his staff review to be sure that their process to invoice the various people under development here, that they were really keeping on top of that. Because that's pretty critical is to not let those funds slide, those, that can help us out every month in our budget. So I think I would continue on in that vein, following what the staff has already done and so perhaps continue with measurable performance objectives, say, when we are looking at the parking management study and the pricing mechanisms, you know, are parking meters really going to be, give us the revenue that we need, how do we monitor that, what are the objectives that we can use and what are the costs associated with monitoring? So those are the sorts of things I would look into.
Thank you.
Do you, have you recently, in the last five years, or do you currently serve on any other Emeryville committee?
No, within the last five years, I did work on the local hazard mitigation plan update and have been following that. And recently, through the Community Emergency Response Team training, I did that with the Fire Department, several days intensive training and it was actually right before all the hurricane stuff stopped, started, so it was really, it was quite exciting to see how they did implement and had to follow procedures and how these, when we're kept in, trained and have a plan ahead, really does help.
I have a question, this is a little bit of a theoretical question.
Mm-hmm.
Given that our income from our major source, retail, looks to be cresting and heading down, what are the other sources of income that you would maybe look to in our city's future? Like, would you, if you were to go to the voters for a quest, would you look at our business license tax or would you look at our hotel tax or what would you do to increase income within our existing tax structure? Or would you, you, you mentioned parking, would, would you look to new programs like this to help fund our city? What would you, what is your, what are your thoughts about going forward for our city economically?
Sure. I think when you describe the changes in our retail sector that were commented on, you know, that's a reality that we're all struggling through. Our commercial sector here is more regional, it's not kind of local city-based and so it's definitely feeling the impacts as the whole region is, as pertains to the change in buying patterns, you know, internet, all that. But I think we have an excellent base established in our scientific and medical research R&amp;D. Here in the community, there's been a lot of support being promoted by our local developers and I think if we continue in that vein, it's very strong, it has the higher paying salaries. I, I don't know what we achieve from, from it specifically, but I think those are clean, desirable kind of industries to have within our community. Retail, I don't have such a handle on because again, it's region-wide and it's actually, you know, kind of national, international. So I would look, I think, to see the pattern that our own people within the community, the businesses have begun in that vein of the medical and science research.
Any further questions?
Nope.
No.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
John Van Gefen.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Councilman Bowders, for rescheduling. We appreciate that. For statements, I am also on the ECCL Parcel Tax Committee. We just met for the first time last month. How that kind of impacts my way of looking at budgets, I don't have experience with public budgets, just private. I do handle a lot of economic issues in my litigation background, but in terms of budgets, I always get nervous when I see budgets that are set up with high expectations. I always prefer a more tempered approach of if there's extra money, that's a good thing versus having shortfalls for planning. One thing, it's a little bit off topic, but the ECCL, I noticed that a large percentage of the budget is based on donations and that makes me nervous that there are funds that aren't guaranteed but are still accounted for. But I'm answering questions before you ask them, I apologize.
I guess, any specific policies or recommendations you would have if you were on this committee?
The parking idea, I like if it was combined with a residential pass, just because I think it's nice to have a benefit for staying here and it helps those residences where they're dealing with a lot of construction and trucks taking up all the spots on their street to kind of alleviate that issue. And then with all of the retail having a bit of a downfall, I think it'd be a good time to visit the idea of rezoning into mixed commercial, residential. Some things could be reset up to make it a little bit easier to use for more than just retail use. I mean, like what Bay Street has, moving that over towards Target and Toys R Us, I think that might be something. But no, I don't have a good answer for that. There's no immediate cure. It's a path the city's been on for a long time, so it's a lot of restructuring to figure out what to do with that retail space if it isn't successful anymore.
Can you tell us a little more about your interest in serving on this committee and part two of my question is, what do you think you bring to the table that the other applicants don't have?
I agree with the first applicant that I think all three of us are fully capable and they all bring different points of views. I'm not going to say I'm any better than the rest. My reason for applying is just civic duty. I've been applying to committees left and right, well, three. I just want to do my part. There's nothing specific about this committee, to be honest, no. Some people are more number crunchers and they get excited about this. I just like the idea of holding the reins and kind of pulling back expectations on budgets because I don't like having to lay people off. I'd rather not have new jobs pop up than to have to cut them further down the line.
I have one question. Can you tell me something that, about the current budget we've been debating for the past three or four months? Can you tell me something that you like or don't like and why?
I have not been following the current budget, so I cannot speak to precisely on that. I've been paying attention more on the ECCL budget, spending my time mostly on that. I notice you guys nodding your head about the donation aspect, but it's, it was about 20% of last year's budget, according to the last meeting we had, so that was kind of a shock to me. So, if I was brought on, I would get up to speed very quickly, but I apologize, I don't have any, anything to gleam at this point. But thank you for your time and this there. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Nancy Cooley, resident, just following up on my email. I've worked with Nat Centeno on the TMA for the past year and he's been a very reasonable person. He's been responsible and I think he'd be a really great member. He also brings a different perspective from the current members because he does work with retail and property management and I think that's a, you know, a large part of our income is coming from retail and I think that it's, it's good to have that perspective added to the budget. I think just be a really good representative. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpeal.
I think that for the revenue of this city here, if you look at the, the territory of what we own and is that the MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, has been overlooked, the access of Emeryville to the Bay Bridge and they are the, they are those people who are collecting high fee for the toll and we are basically a railway to their business. And so, my point is that we are some sort of an agency to their business and from that, as an, as an agent in their transportation department, we should get, I don't want to say a cut, but we should get a percentage of the toll that they charge to people because they, these people are generating millions and millions of dollars. They flood with money and they, I don't want to spill the beam here, but I know that, that they can afford to subsidize our city if we are in trouble with the widget because we are a way that provide them for the business of Tall Bridge. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I'm, every time the council moves an agenda item up, I always take note and I have noted in, over the years, it's been used in a political manner. I'm not saying that's what happened here tonight, but, but if you choose to change the agenda like you did tonight, I mean, it's sort of incumbent upon you to make sure that you do it in a fair and equitable manner because I have seen this city refuse to bring, to adjust the agenda to, to placate like mothers with children and, and, you know, large numbers of people if those people are perceived as bringing something forward that is like not popular with the council majority or, or the, the mayor. I've actually seen it used like sort of as a cudgel and so it's very disturbing to me and so I, so I just wanted to impress upon the five of you, I, I have no problem doing what you did here tonight. I think it's actually good to do that. I mean, insofar that you can, can do that in a fair and equitable way, I, I think it's no problem. But just be aware, you know, which now that you've been on record of having done it, so if you get asked in the future, try to use the same standards that you used tonight to, to placate the three people. Please try to be, you know, use it in a fair and equitable way in the future. Thanks.
Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was glad to see that Nathaniel Centeno applied because his predecessor, Jennifer Nettles, was a big presence here in City Hall and on our committees and I certainly missed her when she left, but I was glad that someone who very capable took her place. I'm happy to see him here in City Hall and it may be because I'm living at Bay Street at the moment, I, I am reminded every day what a big part of our community and what a big part of our retail sales, to be frank, come from that perspective. So, I, I'm inclined to support Mr. Centeno, but I also want to thank the other well-qualified applicants for applying and I, I thank you for applying, thank you for keeping applying for different committees and I just wanted to show my appreciation. I appreciated your applications and the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
I want to echo what Member Martinez just said and take a little loop here. I, I feel like we're exaggerating about the death of retail and I think we're in a period of creative destruction. I think that's from Forbes Magazine and I think that's true. Retail is restructuring, we're looking at different distribution models, the industry itself is restructuring and I don't like to hear us sort of say, oh, it's dying. Retail accounts for 90, 92.2% of all sales in the US. The internet is about under 8%. It's grown significantly, but retail is not dead, nor is it close to dying. It still makes up the majority of sales in the US. So, I'm going to throw that out there because I, I feel like we talk down about it sometimes and we shouldn't. It's a big part of our community, it's a big part of our town and I think the best example of it is Bay Street and for that reason, I'm supporting Mr. Centeno as well. And happy to make a motion in that direction.
I will second your motion. Is there any more discussion?
Any further comments?
I'll just say that I'm very grateful to all three of you for applying as the liaison to this committee. It is a lot of work and I know that all of you would dedicate yourselves and your time to that and I don't think we could have gone wrong choosing tonight, so I, I hope that we can find places for each person who is interested in this community and participating to participate regardless of who is selected, so thank you.
All right, with that, moved by Councilmember Pats, seconded by Councilmember Martinez, to appoint Nathaniel Centeno. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you very much, all of you. It's really important that we have people willing to serve in our city. We have to go forward and we need good people, so please come back to us.
And I will give my city clerk's plug that we always have unexpected vacancies coming up. We may have a new one tomorrow, so please keep your eye. We're really trying to publicize these openings more now than we
We're really trying to publicize these openings more now than we ever did before, so it's not hard to keep track of them, and please apply and apply. Thank you.
Do we keep their applications on file for a period of time?
One year.
Okay.
Okay, that's going to bring us to public hearings, 11.1, which is revocation or modification of the Public Market Noise Waiver.
Good evening, councilmembers. Meirud Desai, senior planner. You have heard about this project several times in the last month or so. On July 11th, the council considered a noise waiver for Saturday work on all Saturdays between mid-July and end of October. The council continued the item and heard it again on July 27th when it approved, and the continuation, the reason for continuing was to allow the applicant to work with the neighbors and sort of different issues, including the later start time. On July 29th, we received a complaint about work starting before 10:00 a.m. As a result of that, staff informed the applicant that a recurrence of violations of conditions of approval, which it was, would result in a stop-work notice, and the council could revoke the noise waiver or modify the approval. After this, later that month, we received a second complaint about the work starting before 10:00 a.m. So at this point, we issued a stop-work order, and a hearing date was set for today for the council to consider this item, either to revoke it or to modify the approval in the way you see fit. Let me just go back. Oops, this is skipping. And just as a reminder, in terms of what the council approved, no Saturday work where it's red, and then you have streetscape work in these different areas, and there were conditions regarding the kind of equipment that would be used in different areas. So basically that closer to the residents, there wouldn't be use of equipment that would make a lot of noise. So in terms of discussions, like I mentioned before, when the conditions of approval do allow the council to revoke or modify the approval when there has been a violation of those conditions, since the stop-work order, we have not received any complaints regarding construction work either during, obviously, no work has been done on any Saturdays, but there have been no other complaints regarding construction during normal, normal workday. Neighborhood notification did go out, as we usually do, and that includes owners and residents of the major residential complexes, including ME. If you recall, there were several residents at the first and the second hearing from ME who had issues with the construction going on. So notice has been, has gone out, and as you take public comment, you will hear from public, but staff has not heard any complaints or any comments to the notice or otherwise. So with that, staff has provided two resolutions for the council to consider. One is which revokes the noise waiver in its entirety, and the second one, if the council so chooses and wishes to approve, we would recommend that you add additional condition which would require an inspector, a public works inspector, to be on the Saturdays an hour before the start time and be there an hour after the stop time to ensure that work is done during the time that it is approved for. And if that public inspector, the condition also authorizes the public inspector to call the police if, you know, they don't listen to him. So with that concludes my presentation. Tim Bacon is here, if you have any questions of him, or, and I'm here for any questions as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess we should have public comment first, then we could have questions. Doesn't that seem like what the normal procedure would be?
I'd like to hear from Tim Bacon first, and that way the public can comment on whatever proposal he's got.
Is there any questions I can answer?
Just, you don't dispute that there have been two violations?
No, no. The, the most recent one, I went back and looked at the letter that Charlie had sent, and I believe it was for work that had started at 9:45 or something like that. I'll be the first to say that my entire team was probably strongly disappointed is the least critical thing I could say, cleanly here, unbelievably angry. As I mentioned in my email, which I know is part of the staff report, you know, we, we took it seriously that the city put its faith in us to abide by these rules, and the trust that we have from this body to finalize this project and get it done for the city was one that we took very seriously. So it was very disappointing, and it was something that we've spent a lot of time hashing out with the folks at Plant Construction. I think ultimately it just boiled down to a miscommunication and a poor, a poor lack of communication between the job site superintendent at Plant Construction and their subcontractors. You know, a lot of guys here don't start until 10:00, and they think, well, okay, I can move my tools into the field at 9:45, or I can get up on the scaffolding at 9:45 so I can start swinging a hammer at 10:00, or, you know, I can do some shoveling, which isn't very loud, at 9:45, you know. So it was, it was, I think, a case of that. Obviously, since then, we were as clear as we could be to make sure that they knew, again, for the third time, what the rules were. So frankly, I was very close to asking that this item be pulled from the agenda tonight, to be perfectly honest, because it didn't seem fair to reconsider it, because we did, I think, not hold up our end of the bargain. If the city would like to consider it, obviously, we'd be happy to have some extra time. Anything that we can get to help move this project forward is of, is of help and is of assistance. The conditions that Vice Mayor Bowers, or that, sorry, that were mentioned by Meiru, I think are fair, but obviously, we'll leave it up to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you continue Saturday work, would the New Seasons Market still open at the target, the target date in November?
Well, currently, we're doing everything we can so that they will. Obviously, they have work that they're doing that I have no control over. I can only control what I'm responsible for, which is the completion of the streetscape work. We've held up our end of the bargain with New Seasons as far as delivering the space to them. They're in there, they're working, they're moving as fast as they can to get open when they want to, which is in the beginning of November. The, a big part of what we're trying to do now, which is a challenge, is the, this is very technical, but the brick pavers that are on 62nd Street, and they're going in now, and that's work that is a helpful and fairly quiet thing to be done on a Saturday. That's probably one of the things we would do on an upcoming Saturday if we had the time to do it. But, you know, like I said from the beginning, this, the delays associated with any infrastructure work are always challenging, and we've run into our fair share of them on this project. Just every little bit helps to be able to make up some of those unforeseen issues that we've encountered.
If we did consider modifying this and going with this, do you feel like Plant Construction would take this inspector seriously?
I do. I think that, I think that they realize the, Plant Construction, I don't know to the extent anyone's familiar with them, but they've, they've been around building in San Francisco and a lot of the area for 75 years. They have a good reputation, and they take it very seriously. I think that they were as, their executive team was as disappointed in their superintendent onsite team as we were, and I think that made itself very clear. I do think that they would abide by the rules. I think having the inspector there and enforcing that is a very fair way of doing that, and I would be the first to tell them that, you know, that would be it. And quite frankly, if this was granted again, you know, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even bother rehearing it or rescinding it. I would just tell us to be done, because obviously, at that point, I would have very little faith that I could commit to you that we would be able to abide by it. Again, going back to what I said earlier about being a little embarrassed to even come before you this evening, to be perfectly honest. So I think that Plant would, would adhere and abide by what the inspector would tell them to do. They're, you know, they're not so callous or so cavalier that if someone said, stop work, I'm going to call the cops, that they would just march right on ahead. And I don't think it would come to that at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment?
When it's question of noise, I always speak in favor of the working man. Only the working man is being criticized for the noise he makes, and about a month ago, I went to visit the folks at the new transit center there, and it didn't say, no visitor come, or it didn't say anything, so I knocked on the door, and, and I found a bunch of people sitting, talking, obviously not working with their hand. For whatever work they do, they do get paid. And so about an hour later, I went back again, the same bunch of people still talking. I guess they all supervise or whatever their function. But those people get paid whether or not there is noise or not. The working man cannot work because what he does makes noise. There is friction, pounding, whatever. And he's also the working man. It's only the people that are being penalized. This is professional bias, right from the beginning. And if those people have to listen to all those people who complain because they don't have their beauty rest on Saturday, this is, those people should get up and get a job to do and earn their living, making noise, then we'll see what's going to happen, if they're going to whine again about the people who handle tools, who has to make a living. And not only that, if you are against those working men, how are you going to get the job done? The raining season is coming, they're going to get paid without working because it rained. Do they mind the rain? Are they complaining about the rain, or they're, are they, thank you, the rain, so we don't have any noise? Are they going to stop the train that comes and blew their horn real loud? And they complain about, and it's really annoying, I mean, come on. I'm calling you common sense here. You have to tell those people who complain that they are out of line, they should get a real job, then we see if somebody is going to complain about their earning. Bye.
Any other public comments?
I just want to add that Plant Construction did, the construction of the Apple Store at Bay Street, and anytime they, they did have some subcontractors that did not follow some of Bay Street's rules, and every time we addressed it, they immediately corrected it. So I just thought I'd add that.
And who based it?
Okay, so I have here, this is an historic document. Here it is. Stop-work order from the city of Emeryville to Mr. Bacon, and it was from, it was August 29th, 2017. This has never happened since 2009. The noise ordinance was begun in 2009. This has never happened. We've never punished any developers for violating the noise ordinance, either waiver or the ordinance proper, and I know because I've followed this. However, that doesn't mean that, you know, Public Market developers were the first to violate our noise ordinance. In fact, every single large development, the developers have violated the noise ordinance, every single one, either their waiver or the ordinance proper. I have made many complaints about this over the years, and never, it never ended net a stop-work order, not even close. I would just complain, and it would, there would be no effect at all. So all I can say, all I can surmise from this is the fact that it was a council member complaining this time. The council member let, registered the complaints, and then that nets a stop-work order. So if you want to, in Emeryville, if you want to have our laws be followed, it's good to have a council member on your side, is what we learned from this. But anyway, this noise ordinance waiver to begin with was totally erroneous and unprecedented. You, the five of you granted this waiver because of a reason that had never been offered before by any developer. They said they wanted to have a waiver because the project has public benefit, and that if you grant a waiver, they'll be able to finish the project faster, and so therefore the public will be benefited earlier, quicker. But it's a totally bogus claim, because every single development that the, that the council approves has public benefit. There's no such thing as a project that doesn't have benefit, because those projects don't get approved by the council. So by definition, every development project approved by the city council has public benefit. So the fact that you granted the waiver based on that to Public Market means that really by all rights, to be fair and equitable, you have to grant a waiver to everybody from now on to ask for one because they're providing public benefit, and they want to get the benefit to the people as quickly as possible. So again, you know, that's, that's a corruption, or a, it's an overturning of the idea of the noise ordinance to begin with. So I think what you should do is revoke the noise ordinance waiver, have them reapply, make them come before you and reapply. That's what you should do, I think. Thank you.
Any other comments on this issue? Okay, discussion. When I first heard about the second waiver, I mean, excuse me, the second violation, you know, I was for stop-work. Well, they've had, I guess, how many Saturdays? At least two, maybe three Saturdays that no work has been done. I think that they've been, they've gotten the message that we're serious, and I, I'm for the modification of the noise waiver as staff has outlined, and I think that they're likely to pay attention and succeed, is what I think. So I'm, I'm in support of that.
I voted against this last time, and having multiple violations of our noise ordinance hasn't made me more inclined to favor this project, so I'll be voting no again tonight.
I, I just wonder what signal we're sending if we grant this waiver again, even with modifications to future projects. So I'm, I'm inclined to, to revoke the waiver tonight, but I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
I'm in the same place I was without, as Member Medina. I was not in support of it. I, you know, I, thinking about community coming out, this would have been the third hearing residents would have come out to, and in the interim between the first one and now, construction was happening on a Saturday, and so the idea that they could come out and speak out no and have an impact, I, I wouldn't do it if I were living in the area, because it just would have been like, okay, I had to do this twice already, I'm going to have to come out a third time. So for that reason, I am not moved, although I do want to say I did appreciate what you had to say. Although I do want to say I did appreciate what you had to say and I appreciate the contrition and it was very powerful, so thank you. But again, I just think it's a bit much to ask people to give up their Saturdays.
I don't think I have anything to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to revoke the noise waiver.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Medina to revoke the noise waiver. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
No, I disagree. I think we've had enough punishment and we could have some benefit.
So it's a four one vote to revoke.
Okay, so 11.2. Resolution of the city council, oh, that's, I didn't do that. 11.2 further down, that was 1.2. 11.2 is adoption of the budget, city of Emeryville, 2017-18 and 2018-19, fiscal years.
Mr. Mayor, just to make a note that 11.2 and 11.2.1 are obviously related. With 11.2, the adoption of the budget and the appropriation of funds and the, to approve the appropriations limit, which is a standard approval that is to be made when adopting the budget. And then followed by, this would be the third occasion for the council to provide final direction. The finance director is prepared to certainly give a brief overview particularly of the few changes that we have incorporated since council's last direction.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I have a short presentation. At the last council meeting, the city council directed staff to budget special event costs in the community programs fund. The amounts are $13,000 for fiscal year 1718 and $20,000 for fiscal year 1819. And these changes are included in tonight's budget. The city council also directed staff to ship $400,000 and $50,000 from library services and co-enforcement funds to the disaster fund. And these changes are reflected in the budget and present on the slide here. Councilmember Martinez suggests that we change the project title for Temescal Park to Temescal Park Security Lighting and Improvements to properly reflect the scope of the project. And staff will make the change after this meeting. The citywide expenditures total $105 million in 1718 and $97 million in 1819. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the budget for the 1718 and 1819 fiscal years and adopt the appropriations limit for the 1718 fiscal year. This concludes my short presentation. Any questions?
I just want to clarify for my colleagues that the CF 12 in Appendix F referred to an Adeline Street connection at Temescal Creek Park and that's not something that we are considering any longer, that so we're at this, that we just wanted to clarify with that title change.
Thank you for making that change.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Further questions, clarifying questions? Okay, public comment. Marud Desai.
Good evening, council members. Marud Desai speaking here as the SEIU chapter president. I and my members have nothing further to say on this item before you. I expect that this would be passed. All I would like to say at this point is that we will be watching and monitoring as disaster unfolds, would be a little bit too much, but we are in for very difficult times and I hope the council has, adjusts its expectations because it tends to forget that, you know, one action that's taken in September, then down comes February and, you know, things come up. Things have to be expedited. This is important, that is important. When you are thinking about that, consider this, what you've done today. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Do I have a motion? Discussion?
I'll move to approve the budget.
I'll second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Pats. And there are two actions to be taken, correct?
Yeah, I'm moving to approve the adoption of the final budget under item 11.2.1.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve the resolution adopting the appropriations limit for fiscal year 1718.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Martinez to adopt the appropriations limit. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
11.3. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville amending the planning regulations in Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units, continued from May 2nd, 2017.
Be just a second here. Good evening, council members. We're back talking about the accessory dwelling units. You saw this in May. These are state mandated changes to the planning regulations and you continued the item so that we could look at lot coverage. The city has approved two ADUs. Both were within the footprint of the existing house, did not change the amount of lot coverage, and one was above a single unit, adding a story, and one was in the basement of a single unit. You can see the little door there, that's the one that has been built. With adding an ADU, there's four situations. There's those two, there's adding attached to the house where you can add up to half the size of the house, up to 1,200 square feet, and detached from the house where you can add up to the full size of the house, up to 1,200 square feet. The city has regulations that have the effect of limiting lot coverage. In the RM zone, the setbacks are side setbacks of three feet, the front is the average of the adjacent yards, or 10 feet if there are none, and the rear is 15 feet except five feet for an accessory dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance has a distance requirement, it has to be six feet away from the single unit if it's detached. And generally, in our regulations, we allow some features in the required yards with restrictions. They can have a patio roof, balcony, stair porch, a garage or shed up to 20 feet wide, as long as it's not in the front setback or the street side setback. And we have some regulations on openness. The required yard has to be impervious surface and 10% of the lot has to be landscaping and that means plants in the ground. The planning code does not set a minimum size for an ADU, but the building code does not recognize anything smaller than an efficiency dwelling unit, which has to be 120 square feet plus bath, kitchen and closet, which pretty much brings it up to 300 square feet, maybe a little less. So we use that in our analysis. So in the RM zone, we have 444 lots that contain residences, 113 have single unit residential use, that's about a quarter, 64 of those have space for a detached ADU, and 42 of those are owner occupied. So at the moment, with ownership the way, with occupancy the way it is, about 10% of the residential lots could add an ADU. The lot sizes of the single, the lots with one house on them, average 3,700 square feet. The range is from 1,500 to 7,600 square feet, there's some big lots. Only 13 lots are 2,500 square feet or less and 14 lots are 5,000 square feet or more. There are 71 single unit lots that cannot add a detached ADU, either because they're small and have high lot coverage, or because they have a big front yard not leaving enough room in the backyard. Of the 42 single unit lots that can add a detached one-story ADU, and these sketches are based on a GIS analysis that was done, they're just examples. Eight can add a small one, 10 can add a medium and small one, 10 can add a medium large one, and 14 can add a 1,200 square foot one. So this graph shows lot coverage, the blue vertical lines are how big an ADU each of the 42 lots could add, and then the squiggly line is lot coverage, and the top is now. The average lot coverage of those lots is 33% with a range of 19 to 56%. And if ADUs were added, the range would be 34 to 76% and an average 54%. So the range is still within the neighborhood range. So to sum up, lot coverage with existing and with the maximum one-story detached ADUs. In the RM zone, the existing range is 0 to 88% and the average is 40%. If the ADU ordinance were maxed out, the average would be one percentage point higher than it is now. Of the lots that could add ADU, the range is 19 to 56%, the average is 33%, meaning they have room to add something. So if they did, their range would be 34 to 76%, still within the range of the neighborhood, and their average would be a little bit over half. As we were working on this, we realized that the courts code section, which is in another part of the code, it doesn't exactly say that it only applies to large apartments and condo projects, but that's what was, the city had in mind when the regulations were adopted. What it says is that walls must be separated by a distance equal to the height of the opposite wall, 20 feet at the living room window, 14 feet at the other room window, whichever is greater. It's intended to apply to multi-unit residential projects with at least 10 units and its purpose is to provide adequate separation of walls with windows in multi-story apartment buildings, not like this picture here. And it's used in large projects to create space between the buildings instead of setbacks and streets. So if the court sections were applied in the RM zone, it would require a larger separation than the setbacks would, and it would make it hard to build any units in that zone. So staff recommends that we modify that requirement to say court shall be provided between facing exterior walls of multi-unit residential buildings with 10 units or more on the same lot. So in sum, the lot coverage is currently limited by setback and distance requirements and placement of houses on the lots. The maximum ADUs would change the average lot coverage in the RM zone from 40% to 41%. Lots with new ADUs would be within the existing range of individual lot coverages and would average 54%. So staff recommends that no additional regulations be added, but would like to edit the court requirement to clarify that it only applies to multi-unit residential with 10 units or more. So that concludes the presentation that I had prepared and I'll be happy to answer any comments, any questions.
The, there was one illustration, if you go back to the maximum size of an ADU in the backyard, almost the same size, right here, this one, the top one.
Mm-hmm.
Just seems, this is the only condition to me that seemed a little creepy. Just not enough space around those units. And the other illustrations just, just don't seem as bad to me.
Yeah, that one has 50% lock, 56% lock coverage.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess that isn't that bad, but it's just the geometry of it looks a little stark. I don't know, it's just a, did the staff note that when they looked at that or was there any issues about that? Was there any discussion about that?
Well, we have become aware that there's some concern about just having slivers of space in the yard, that it's not necessarily how much, although this is how much. And we've thought of the possibility of adding a provision. Hold on. In the dimensional requirement section, about usable open space. So try this on, see how you like it. For lots with an accessory dwelling unit attached or detached from the primary single unit, adding to the building footprint on the lot, that's not for the ones that are within the existing footprint, a common open space serving the primary single unit and the accessory dwelling unit must be provided. It shall be at least 200 square feet with a minimum dimension of 10 feet. So that's a little bit wider than the six-foot separation that we require now. It shall be at least 75% open to the sky, not covered by building elements like eaves, porches or balconies, and at least 25% planted. These are inspired by our open space requirements for larger projects. It may also include such surfaces as patio paving, sport courts and decking. So that, it...
So you were trying that out?
When we get to discussion after public comment, I can give you a little background on that.
Okay.
Okay. So that's a possibility to think about that or tweak that or whatever. Anything else? Okay, I'll go back to this.
Could you just leave that slide up for when we return?
Okay.
Thank you.
Public comment?
This is a public hearing, so suggest you open the public hearing.
Okay, I am opening public hearing.
I want to mention that we have a potential applicant who was going to come tonight, but she couldn't stay. And she has an unusual lot, she loaned me her plan. Well, I'll just describe it. She has enough space between the house and one fence to convert her garage and build a unit next to the house, well, that's all right, and leave a large backyard. So there are many different configurations, so that's all I wanted to say about her.
Can you say that again?
I'd like to see it, so I could understand what you're talking about.
She lives on Boudreaux Street. Yeah, 1588.
Yeah, so we don't have a lot of lots like this, but this has almost 20 feet between the house and the side fence. So she has, she might have room, she's just starting to put together an application to add an ADU next to the house, not really changing the street frontage much at all and still maintaining the big backyard. So that's an example of a possibility. Right, that's the garage.
Yeah, that seems like that would be a good solution to having enough outdoor space. But would it, would that fit in the current rules or no? Because there's, I don't see the...
It would require an exception to standards for the side, this, this, this configuration would require an exception to standards for the side setback. I think it goes from three feet to two feet, something like that.
Okay.
Other than that, I think it fits. So that's an example that we have different lots.
You have a colleague looking to get...
Uh-oh, come. Navarre's been working with her, she knows.
Okay, so hello, good evening, council. It would not be feasible under the curtain, current regulations because of the courtyard issue, because of the separation between the courtyard and new building. So obviously, oh, I'm trying to use the mouse to show...
Use manual mouse.
That wasn't going to work. So here you have the main dwelling unit and then here is the existing garage that would be demoed, and here's the proposed new location for the dwelling unit. Obviously, the separation at this location between the dwelling, new ADU and the existing building cannot be the distance apart of the height of the building. The existing building is at least 20 feet tall, probably taller, it's two-story. So actually, that courtyard requirement would mean you couldn't do any detached and have a feasible detached dwelling unit on this lot. So that's why that's a critical component.
Yeah, thank you. She was talking about why we don't want to apply the courtyard requirement here, but it does meet the six-foot separation. Okay.
Well, this, this is a mixed problem.
Are we going to close the public hearing?
Okay. Public hearing's closed. It's a difficult problem, there's no easy way... There's no easy way to adjudicate. I mean, I, I looked at the, that, the first illustration, and I want that, you know, this, this usable open space just looks like civility to me. And without it, it just seems like that would be so dense, there would be no common outdoor space for a different kind of exterior life. People need balconies, people need, you know, that, that second illustration that I complained about was just not quite enough outdoor experience for, especially the back unit. So I kind of want this usable open space requirement. On the other hand, I can see that what we just saw had open usable space in the backyard, but this, it would fail by this definition, so...
I'm sorry, I don't understand. Why would, why would it not meet this?
Well, because it says usable open space between the two units, right?
Between, not being physically be between, but between them as a lot space.
Wait, between?
He's, he, it doesn't say that.
It would have to serve both of them, but it doesn't have to be between them.
He's referring to your reference to between, meaning he's thinking between the buildings. Am I correct?
Wouldn't have to be between them.
Oh, no.
Oh, so that would meet it, this?
It would meet it.
It just, well, we might want to tweak this a little bit to say that it is accessible to both units.
Okay. That would work. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm for, you know, yes, we'd have a little bit less density of accessible dwelling units, but I just think that in the long run, we would have a better living conditions for those, on those properties. Just think it would be better for our psychological future city dwellers to have that.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank staff for the very extensive study you did, the GIS on all those units and all the lots in the city. It's super informative and will be useful for a lot of things in the future, too, I think. So thank you for doing that. This proposal comes because when I did the staff review on my side, I thought our, our goal when we had given staff feedback in May was to ensure that when we have single-family homes, that we, we make sure that if families live in those homes, that there be a certain amount of open space outside and that lots don't just get filled up. And we do have these minimum setbacks, and so technically, when you calculate setbacks in, accessory dwelling units are exempt from the 15-foot setback from the rear of the property, they get only a five-foot. So these little strips of land that, when you add them up, they count as open space, but they're not functionally usable to people in a open space capacity. And so, you know, this is, this proposal here is the product of staff responding to that concern for me when we discussed this item, just because I wanted to make sure that any accessory dwelling unit we have, we don't simply have the profit side of putting us a extra unit on the property that doesn't really factor in the attractiveness of families being able to use a single-family home or an accessory dwelling unit, if that's appropriate, by ensuring that there be some amount of outdoor space and that that's not constrained to, on the ground, it can be balcony space, patio space, in these settings, you can be creative. But I do really appreciate staff. This looks to me like what we require out of multi-unit buildings. Is this correct?
That's what it's based on, yes.
Yes, so this is compatible to what we already require from larger properties in the creation of space, and so I, I support with some language tweaks the planning director has suggested. I support adding this to ensure that there be some livability component to where we add ADUs. I strongly support ADUs as a path to making housing affordable for homeowners and for people who need smaller spaces. My only other two comments on this were, I actually think we should consider a minimum unit size for ADUs. I know that functionally, you said nothing below 300 feet would really happen, but I could see people who come in and do a demo of a property, creating a situation where they could try to maximize, maximize profits by doing the math and starting with a clean slate and building a house in the future that has the space to have a less than 300 square foot space. And although I don't want to, you know, pick on the numbers per se, I do, I do feel like there is a minimum standard we should set in terms of what's acceptable to us as a living space, and I think 300 feet is, is very reasonable to set as that minimum. Those are my comments.
I think this is an immensely well-researched staff report. I really appreciate it. I think it goes in great detail, and I think that this usable open space amendment makes it very palatable.
What do you think?
I'm in support, I'm in support of the usable open space. I, I am wondering about a minimum size for ADUs because, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into my microphone. I am worried about the minimum size of ADUs because I know for some folks, let's say a senior citizen who's occupying a rather large home, and they want to be able to turn a large unused bedroom into a suite so they can get some income, you know, I don't, it's, we don't have a ton of inventory that this ordinance is going to affect, and I, I don't want to hinder someone from adding a unit to the market that might serve in place of, for instance, a room in an SRO.
So really, thank you for that, really well-made point. So I should have clarified, I'm referring to detached...
Oh, yes, that's fine.
I think a minimum for a detached, I'm sorry about that, a detached ADU is what makes sense.
Yeah, because I, I am...
Yeah, I totally agree with what you're saying. If you're existing structure and you're working within an envelope, I don't have any disagreement with you.
Because I think that's part of the intention of the state laws that were passed is for seniors to be able to, to age in place, use their homes, and at the same time, help, help pay the mortgage and relieve the burden of the housing crisis, so...
Yeah, I apologize, I clarify. I totally agree with you, but I'm, I'm talking about building a new separate structure that's, like, what's the point of constructing something that small to me if, if, it doesn't look like it could happen right now anyway with the current lots, but I don't want someone to do a tear down and then reconfigure it designed to create something deliberately small that, you know...
A bunch of hipster tiny houses.
Profits, yeah, I don't want to, that's the thing I'm concerned about, it's a separate thing.
Okay, thank you. Then we're in agreement.
Therefore, are you making a motion with that?
I would love to hear from Councilmember Pat.
Minimum 300 foot specified?
I'm good. Okay, I had one other question then, which was just related to the courts issue. Is it really about open air and light access, or is there a fire code reason why we try to keep a minimum distance because a taller building that had a fire issue could potentially be, you know, could, could burn onto the neighboring building if it's too close? That was my concern.
No, it's not a fire code issue.
Okay.
It was purely an aesthetic and light and air issue.
Okay. Sure, I'll make a motion if no one else has comments then. I move to approve the, I might make a motion to read by title only.
Second, that.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Pats to read by title only.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the planning regulations in Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance with the requirement, with the amendments that accessory dwelling units that are detached, we have a minimum ADU size of 300 square feet, and that the proposed language provided for Section 9-5.1408 related to dimensional requirements, that we add subsection E, usable open space, as provided by staff unless staff is stating that they wish to amend that.
Well, I would suggest just a small tweak to the language where it says a common open space serving the primary single unit. I would change that to a common open space accessible to both the primary single unit and accessory dwelling unit.
And with that clarification, that's my motion.
Second.
And just, just to clarify, the minimum size would be in Section 9-51406A2, which currently says if the accessory dwelling unit is detached from the principal single unit, the floor area shall not exceed 1,200 square feet, and we would add to that and shall be at least 300 square feet.
Correct. That's the motion.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Pats to approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance as amended and read into the record. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Okay, now we're, that was 11.3, is that correct?
Right.
Now we're on to 12.1. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance of City of Emeryville amending the minimum wage paid sick leave.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. In interest of time, I will ask if the council would like a staff report?
No.
No.
Necessary.
Okay.
Can we go to public comment?
A public comment?
Can I make a motion to read by title only?
Moved by Councilmember Pats, seconded by Councilmember Medina to read the ordinance by title only. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
An ordinance of the City of Emeryville amending Sections 5-37.04 and 5-37.07 of Chapter 37 of Title V of the City of Emeryville Municipal Code with respect to the definition of hospitality service charges.
And then a motion to actually approve the first reading and introduction?
Does somebody want to make? We have to make another motion?
I'll move we approve it by first reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Pats, seconded by Councilmember Medina to approve the introduction and first reading of the ordinance. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Okay, 12.2. An ordinance for the, of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adding Chapter 26, Construction and Demolition Waste Requirements to Title VIII of the Municipal Code.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Andrew Cloud, the Acting Public Works Director, and that works so well, I might try the same thing. In interest of time, would you like a, a staff report? I can summarize quickly if you'd like.
I'll, I would like a quick summary.
Okay. The demolition, the, the construction and demolition debris ordinance, what it refers to is during construction projects or in the demolition, in demolition projects, the materials that are generated from the site, whether it be wood, metal, concrete, other types of debris, it, it requires diversion, and this is all consistent with our Climate Action Plan with a variety of state laws which we could go through. And in 2016 in December, the, this, the City of Emeryville adopted the new State of California Building Code, which incorporated many of these diversion requirements within it. And in doing so, it repealed the city's own specific requirements. And essentially, what this ordinance does is restores some of those requirements that the City of Emeryville had that are somewhat more stringent than the statewide requirements. And that is specifically that alternative daily cover isn't, is not allowed to be included as diverted waste. An alternative daily cover is at the landfills every day for sanitary reasons. They must put a layer of soil, or what's called daily cover, to keep the birds, rats, et cetera, to cover it, the smells. And so what the state law allows is that material that goes and is used as alternative daily cover is considered as diverted. Because it's being used for a purpose, it's not just being put into landfill. What our ordinance and a number of other communities have done as well is say, no, it's still going to the landfill, so we don't want to allow that to be counted as diverted waste, it's still going to the landfill. And the second major difference is that demolition projects are included, and they are not included in the statewide building code. And so that would be, you tear down a building, that is included all the same requirements. And I'd be happy to answer any other further questions or explain some of the definitions or anything else you'd like.
Is, my question would be, is current state law for demolition, is it really just egregious and they're just landfilling all buildings without recycling? Is that really what's happening?
No.
Okay.
But it doesn't apply the same, the same rigid standards of the 65 percent of all materials must be diverted, 100 percent of all Portland cement concrete. So the standards are, are lower.
Okay.
But we're saying that we want to apply the same high standards to demolition as well as regular construction waste.
Okay.
I have no questions.
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have to take an action on that still, right?
Yes.
Is there a public comment?
Oh, yeah, public comment.
Public comment.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
I got the first, I didn't get the second.
It was a tie.
I'll take it.
All right. Moved by Vice Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Medina to read the ordinance by title only. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adding Chapter 25, Construction and Demolition Waste Requirements to Title VIII of the Emeryville Municipal Code and amending Section 1-2.01F of Chapter 2 of Title I of the Emeryville Municipal Code regarding violations, sequel determination exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines 15061 sub-B3 and 15378 sub-B3.
I, I don't want to be a stickler, Mr. Attorney, but it's Chapter 26, and does that matter for your purposes?
Chapter, you're right, it is Chapter 26. Thank you for the correction.
On the consent calendar, you've already added Chapter 25.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure for reading purposes if that matters.
Thank you. And what I will note for the record is that the numbering throughout the ordinance itself should reflect 8-26.010203.
Yes.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Medina, seconded by Councilmember Martinez?
Sure.
To approve the introduction and first reading of the ordinance. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Resolution is this, City Council approving the release of a request for qualifications for a public art installation at the Emeryville Marina.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Amber Evans, a community development coordinator for the City of Emeryville, and I'm bringing this RFQ to you tonight for release. This is one of two projects. The first was brought to you a couple weeks ago, is the mural project, and this is the second from the Public Art Master Plan that was adopted last December. The PAC made those recommendations to move forward with the two projects in, in January, and the subcommittees were formed to really work with the harbor masters, boat users, and residents at Watergate. So a subcommittee that was rather robust in its diversity moved forward with the recommendations you see in the RFQ tonight. In August, the PAC unanimously recommended your release of this document. And the CIP already includes the money that we would need for the initial task related to this call, as this is a multi-step call. I'll just walk through the locations we're looking at for the possible installation, the goals for the project, the budget and schedule, and some of the special considerations we're making. After walking the site, looking at the public versus the private spaces and how they were divided, there was a real focus on just within the Marina Park. And the way the RFQ is written is that it could be any location in the park, but we've highlighted some preferred locations where we've considered some of the site constraints that we know any artists working in this space would need to look at, and highlighted for them that they might want to prioritize these spaces. One is on the northmost point, which is really visible from the fishing... One is on the northmost point, which is really visible from the fishing pier and the backside of this, and it's also visible from boats coming into the site, and is along the path that skirts the eastern edge of the Marina. Another site, as shown in this picture, really captures the view back to the city and is raised above a meadow that is well-used from all the people that we spoke with out at the Marina, and so we wanted to make sure there were no conflicts with the meadow site, but that it was visible and interaction was possible from it. And then a third site is along a berm, and here the concern is just making sure that we're not blocking any views to the Golden Gate Bridge, which of course is so valued on our Marina, and so making sure that it's within a subarea where there aren't conflicts with benches or other use and views. The goals of the project were multifaceted, and we're not requiring artists to do all these things, but hope that they would accomplish at least a few of those things. There's been talk about this being iconic for Emeryville. What does it mean to enter our city from the water as a shoreline city and see this as your first image? Enhance the public's awareness of the shoreline, really bridging both our natural and our urban setting, creating a landmark, building civic pride, perhaps having this being kinetic or climbable, or in some way that you can engage it. And one of the themes that had carried out throughout the Public Art Master Plan was, how could we somehow reinstate what had happened in the mud flats, yet not have that be a conflict with our shoreline uses? And so there became kind of a discussion of, what's the current feeling about D Y I culture? Could Burning Man reflect that? What are something in the art world that could make something durable, but be evocative of that spirit as it reflects the relationship between art and innovation in Emeryville? And then throughout the master plan was also kind of the idea of functional pieces. What would it mean that seating was within an art piece, or a lookout spot could be integrated into something functionally? And then really respecting the site as for the beauty that it has, the diversity of uses, the diversity of people and experiences. We're expecting that we'll give an artist about 150, I mean, the budget is 150,000. The other elements of this project are really about doing this as a multi-stepped call, meaning that we provide about five artist honorariums to come out, assuming they have travel, we'll pay that, giving them a stipend to develop their design, perhaps a mock-up of what they'd be proposing for the site. We'd want to have a conservator who's really looking at, can this withstand the wind, the sand, the really harsh environment that we're proposing for this? And as with anything on the Marina, we're going to have to talk with B C D C about what's really feasible out there. And so that may mean that we need to look at some low-lying options, or if we're bringing forward a high vertical element, how do we meet their requirements for that? And we'll use a consultant to help us through that process, as has typically been done. And then the, one of the new elements, and I'll talk about it a little more, is possibly a stipend for participation. Going back for just, whoa, this is sensitive. I want this again, and we're just gonna go right back here. I'll talk a little bit about those site considerations while I'm following my slide. We are going to have a contingency, just in case we're outside of, this is outside the artist's contract, this is if something comes up where we find we made a problem, or the conditions weren't as we express them in the RFP, and so this gives us a little, an ability to in real time respond to the project moving forward once we're under contract. This is expected to, with some uncertainty given the B C D C permitting process, but building that in here, we hope that by January of next year, you'll have conceptual design proposals that the community and yourselves can be looking at here in this link, as we've done in the past for about a two-week period in February, and that we would then be bringing that back to the selection panel for them to pick among those five finalists, one for contract, and then bring that back to you in March and April in that time period, and then do design and fabrication as a separate contract that we're doing directly with the artists, and that, that contract would be brought back to you for your consideration, and hope to be done in about a year. The stipend I was talking about were, this is something that got talked about in the master plan, what would it mean to have the professional artists that are doing the caliber of work, that are in our commissions, bring those trades and skills to our community, whether that be the schoolchildren, or that working with the co-op or others within it to do trades and skill building? And so nobody wanted to prescribe that you had to do that, thought there might be some artists that had no interest in it, but to offer a little bit of money, that if they proposed something like an apprenticeship, or teaching a class, or studio tours, and we're not prescribing it, we're saying, hey, if you can give us a proposal, and it's exciting, and we want to do it with you, we'll give you a stipend to do that. And that comes right out of the master plan. And the Bay Conservation and Development Commission at B C D C, I talked about, I think, vertical elements, they may be limiting that, that may be a conflict we get there, and so there may be the need to move forward with two proposals, one that's more of a low element. And as I mentioned before, we might target, in addition to our normal process, which includes a system that's called CAFE, Call for Entry, we'd put that out, it goes out to the nation, artists can respond electronically with their images, and we have a pretty standard process for that, but maybe also reaching out to artists that have been given grants and honored to do installation, Burning Man because of the harshness of that environment being similar in some ways to the water and a lot of the marine images that have been evoked through that process. These are some examples of that, of what I was talking about, how I might, we might see something that was either aquatic in nature, or waterfowl, or trees, or natural elements, but then had that Burning Man feeling. And so your, your steps tonight are to approve the release of it, and then I would be putting it on CAFE and getting it out through other sources and emails, so I appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I have one question, the B C D C vertical restriction that might exist, do you, what is, what do we think it might be?
Um, I, that conversation hasn't started, I did send the initial RFP to them and said, could you give me any early feedback, and they said they didn't have time to now. We have Peninsula Telltale out there, which is a tall vertical element with its widest point at its tallest point, so I, I believe that we shouldn't be constrained in what we're willing to put to them, but we might find that because of the proximity to the views directly out to the Golden Gate Bridge, that they're more concerned about these locations than when we were southerly of that. So I think, I tried to explain maybe a game plan of, if a tall vertical element is the top artist with no consideration to B C D C, but there's a secondary one, we might keep a conversation going with the secondary one, or at least have that internally conversations about, well, when we go through this process with our, our initial consideration, might we be able to do some alternatives in this other way?
Sure.
I, I have opinions because this is my field.
Yes.
I, just to say to the council, I didn't review any of this because I wasn't here in August, and I wasn't on the committee until, you know, after this has been approved. But, you know, I look at a budget, like, if you go back to the budget.
Sure.
Or we get into, are you going to ask a question, or are you getting into discussion?
Just because he.
Discussion, yeah, so I won't.
He's gonna say public comment.
Public comment.
Just call for it, so we can.
Yeah.
It does not like that slide.
Yeah, so I was, I wanted to have a discussion, so we'll do public comment first.
There was any, but.
No, I agree.
Okay, I'd like to express some opinions perhaps about that, like, look at that total budget, 245,000, boy, if I was an art supplying, that last figure would be a lot more appealing than 150,000. Okay, what is all the other stuff there, you know, and like, you could perhaps say that to the artists, this is just, you need to have your proposal be able to get by all of the nosaying agencies, you know, it's not just going to be B C D C, but, you know, the engineering has got to be, you know, your proposal has got to, that illustration you showed with that rope ladder going up there, no way that the city would tolerate that, there's no insurance that would cover that, you know, things like, you know, just you would, you could expect more of your artists and get more money to them is, is a possible suggestion, that's a, that's a question about this. You know, there's, there's a ratio there, like, if you have a consultant, you could nurse along artists that wouldn't be able to do all of the necessary stuff, but then you might get artists that could do it because it's a bigger budget.
To clarify the consultant's role, there is some of that handholding that I think you're referring to in, in that task, but additionally, and some of the other funds are really related to the openness of the call, having selection panels, getting people that are outside of our norm of operations that might be found here in the region to be on those selection panels, and then paying for the, the creation of the conceptual design proposal, and someone on the PAC made this same comment of, that you're making of, if we could build that budget, and this has been used for all the other commissions, and as I answered her, I think the concern is if we move, if we take the money out of these various other steps, we move to a sole source solicitation, and, and her proposal was to pursue that. But how do we do that without stating that this isn't just the best friend of the person on the Public Art Committee? And so the, I've inherited a process that I've found works quite well in terms of the two stages, but it does have. If we took the money out of the consultant, it slows the process down, and it means staff are going to do it, and so I think as we balance the needs that we have from staff, for my, for example, myself doing the parking management plan versus trying to manage this as a call at the same time, this is a way for us to really move things forward at the same time.
And the honorarium and travel?
So the honorarium is for everyone, so we're pretty set to, that would be, and the PAC talked about this a lot, actually, that would be 15,000, we could expect that no matter who we talked to, we would be paying that. The 4,000 is really based on their, their receipts. If they live in Oakland, we're not paying them a dime over 3,000, and if they're flying in from Miami, like our current artists for the Shell Mound, then we're going to be paying them for their real travel, and if it only cost them 2,000, that's what we pay them, it wouldn't be a flat honorarium of those funds. So we could have cost savings there, and.
Okay, I've heard enough to go along with how it is. Any further discussion?
Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting some kinetic submissions with the amount of wind that's at the, at the Marina, so I appreciate that the committee considered that.
Of course.
Is there a motion?
Would you like to make one?
I could. Okay, I move to approve.
Second.
You got it.
Moved by Mayor Donahue, seconded by Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Thank you.
12.5. This is to, oh.
We already did that?
No.
Okay.
Age-friendly.
Resolution of the City Council of Emeryville to authorize staff to enroll Emeryville in the American Association of Retired Persons, ARP, Network of Age-Friendly Communities.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, I will be happy to answer any questions. You have a staff report about authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of commitment for this application for age-friendly communities. There's still some things that maybe required additional council actions in the future, but at this time, this will start the process with the ARP for a network of age-friendly communities, which I think a lot, the city is doing a lot of these things, and it'll check off a lot of the boxes, but it'll also bring to light any things that need to be improved on in the future.
Any clarifying questions?
Nope. No.
Any public comment?
Yes, I objecting. I'm sorry, my name is Renee Terle, I happen to be a volunteer at the Seniors Center. I volunteer in, I being Information Technology Associate, that's my background, I'm a computer designer. This comes very much as a surprise because I'm in a project which is doing a lot better than what seems to be happening here, and I'm bothered because I just learned this by accident, I didn't even realize that something like that would be coming to, to have the city involved in something of this sort. I've read, so I still had time to read whatever I could collect on, on the internet, and this is something that even, even the ARP will not support. They will not even say that they support it, it's just a bunch of people who get together and are going to, you know, exchange information and call themselves a network. The other thing is that this is happening because I do have a project which is very important to, to the city of Emeryville, and it, it, well, it is around the subject of the silver economy, which is something that can bring brand-new business activities to, to Emeryville, and this is something that I have been presenting to some of the people already at the Seniors Center. So this is why I sound like I'm a little bit upset, because first, I learned this by accident, and, and second, it sounds like interfering was, was something that I think needs to have a project, an investigation project done, okay? Now, the other thing is that being associated with the ARP on something that is international is a very bad idea, because now you're talking about Americans coming as lobbyists in other countries, and that's really the way that, that definitely, you know, being American ARP really sounds. I can show you some articles which actually are from the ARP saying some not very nice things about, about the way that seniors are handled in Europe. So, okay, so shelves this, or, you know, start, you know, maybe some other investigation, but don't do it, okay? Do you have any questions for me?
I, I have a question for you, so I, I'm not sure I understand how this program would run contrary to whatever it is, the project that you're working on.
Because implied there is that it would be the Council for Aging which would be essentially doing the, the fieldwork, doing this collection.
Correct.
Well, the Council on Aging has not done anything of this sort of any investigation, and the one thing that has been surprising me about, about this, this silver economy is that it is a technology thing. It is something which is going to go into the robotics that are going to be in seniors' homes, okay? These are things that are being developed right here in Berkeley and Stanford, and I learned that in France. So what is going on here, okay? I mean, what, what are those people doing that are not doing that they should be bringing things that are American, really, and that are local to the benefit of the senior community right here in Emeryville? of the senior community right here in Emeryville? You see, I mean, that's why there's a lot of, a lot of issues here. There's a lot of things involved. So, you see, I don't know even what to go to, to explain the benefits of, of the senior economy, why it is something which is completely different than what the, the speculators, you know, are saying. So maybe I need to come and make a presentation to the Council. I mean, I, I don't know because I don't even know how to, to get a project of this sort started in Emeryville.
We, we, you've gone beyond your time limit, but you've made your point well, I think. I think we understand your point. And are there any other people that would like to speak about that? I, I have some questions. Is, oh, you, you can sit down if you'd like.
Okay.
AARP, I joined when I turned, I think, 50. That was a long time ago. And I looked into this organization and the more I looked into it, the more disappointed I was. They were really upset when I quit. They were like, well, what's wrong? Well, a lot of what was wrong was some of the things that this gentleman was talking about, about. They did things in really big ways that I didn't think necessarily helped out seniors. So I'm a little suspicious about AARP, frankly. And then my question really has to do with, the goals seem excellent to make specifications potentially for our city that would help seniors live better by how we design our community. And so you mentioned that we have a lot of things that would be checked off on that. I kind of, I want to delay voting on this. And that's what I'm going to propose, that we don't vote on this right now and that we come back and we see actually what it really is and just look at it more carefully because I'm, I'm concerned from what I've heard. And, you know, this is, this point makes me very concerned. I just don't want to vote on it until I know a lot more.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to get the full presentation from the AARP at the recent Commission on Aging meeting. And I was concerned about city resources that might be poured into this program. But what I learned was that it's a very, there's a very modest schedule especially. It's a five-year plan that starts with simply evaluating where we're at to, you know, where we're at in being an age-friendly community. So they've got their, they've got eight areas where they evaluate these and a process. And this work could be done by our Commission on Aging. It would help us have a lens on what we're already doing. A lot of these things are already in place in our planning practices. It, it's just a different way to view how we're, we're moving as a city with a, with a large, growing aging population. And I, I think that this, moving this today does not commit us to spend any money, to do anything specific. We're simply saying we're interested in doing this. We'd like to apply to become an age-friendly community. We'd like to start moving, taking these steps to at least see where we're at. And we can always shut it down. There's not, there's nothing that the AARP gets out of this, but there is a network of other communities and large ones at that, I believe Los Angeles, the County of Los Angeles, and the City of Los Angeles. I want to say San Francisco as well. There, there are many large cities that are well on their way in their five-year plans. So we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel in terms of what we're looking at. And I just, from hearing the presentation, from discussing this with the members of the Commission on Aging, I don't see a lot of drawbacks to taking tonight's step.
Can I ask, can I ask her a question? So the committee was fully behind this?
Unanimously, yes.
Okay.
I'm curious, where did this come from? Did AARP approach us or did the Commission on Aging? Where, where did this come from?
I believe Commission on Aging member Louis Labat brought this forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Excuse me, could I say something?
Yes, please.
What I hear does not match what I see on the internet.
Can you speak into the microphone so we can hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. What I hear does not match what I've read on the internet. Okay? Being age-friendly, they say is friendly to any age. This thing is about, is not, is saying that if you really look at it, I mean, what is on paper, I don't know what was presented. I was not, I was not invited. Okay? It seems that some things, there's some communication problems within the Senior Center. But what I've read, because right away I jumped to see what, what this thing was all about, he doesn't say that anything special he's going to be doing, paying attention to anybody, anything special about the problems that seniors can have in a, in a community. He just simply says that he tweets them as friendly whatever age they have. So, you see, that's why I'm saying this, this is sudden to me and I am very deep in actually what you, you understand. Because there are some global problems that are associated with, with the care of seniors. And they actually develop in China right now. There are, there are very special silver economy meetings taking place in China for one reason is that with the one-child family, you know, the one-child family, they preferred boys. So they don't have any grandmothers now. Okay? And the grandmothers are the key to actually maintain a lot of security and also the quality of life and also the health, the health care. See, there are issues like this.
Okay, so you, I think you've, you've made your point about there that there's other alternatives perhaps.
Well, Mr. Mayor, actually, along that same path, I just wanted you to know this is a, the age-friendly community idea, this is originated with the World Health Organization. And they went to the AARP and said, this is what we would like you to, to do in America. Like, here's the program. So it's not, it didn't just come out of nowhere. It's something that's happening globally. And, you know, it's, we can learn from other cities, we can learn from other countries about what's, what's working best and, and really report back. And I have a feeling that we're going to have the opportunity to pat ourselves on the back after the first evaluation because we are doing a lot of these things.
Yeah, I've, I've heard enough. Does anybody else want to say, any further comments?
Nope.
I, I will move the resolution.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowers. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye. So that concludes our action items. Communications reports, department heads. Any reports? Councilmembers reporting on meetings attended.
I attended the Annual League of Cities Conference last week, Wednesday through Friday in Sacramento. I got the opportunity to sit in a lot of fantastic sessions and learn a lot about homeless issues, Prop 64 grant programs, SB 1 funding specifically, and a lot about what other cities are doing across the state. And it was really interesting and enlightening. As for our resolutions, we took the opportunity to discuss it. And I should commend our city because a lot of other cities didn't discuss the resolutions with their councils. And people were just kind of running around on the final day. So I'm really happy we did that. We were strongly opposed to the first resolution and you guys gave me latitude to decide what to do with the second. I would have ended up supporting the second one based on my conversations with people there. However, the league as a whole refused to allow me to pull it off, the first one off of consent. So I voted no on both of them loudly.
I just want to say-
They yelled at me first.
I just want to, I actually, it's, it's actually really important to acknowledge. I get to work with the League of Cities a lot and I have made presentations in front of many of their committees. And they are not the most affable to more progressive-minded cities and councils. And to have all of them there and, and to do what Councilmember Medina did, and I received a flurry of text messages asking me for data on things I had sent her. And, and I literally put up one of my business calls on hold to assist her. But I really want to commend you because that is, that is not an easy environment for a lot of people to go into and to voice an opinion that is often not congruent to a lot of smaller, more conservative cities. And so I, I'm very happy that you are a representative because it takes a good deal of strength and fearlessness to do that. And I think you demonstrated that immensely. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I really appreciate that. I genuinely didn't know how strong that no response is going to be.
Welcome to the League of Cities.
Did you slam your fist on the table?
I got, I wasn't in front of the room and they all yelled at me. And I did it by affirmation. I had hundreds of people yelling.
Well, the other thing that they do is they, they, the votes are at the very end, or at least was that way last year. And they all wanted to go home.
It takes not very long to pull something from consent. So, but I have talked to our local director, Dan Kalb, about the implementation of Resolution 1. And he has vowed to try to divert resources away from it. That was my experience last week.
Fuck Dan.
Okay, any other council members reporting?
I just want to, as a, yeah, is this, oh yeah, meetings attended, two meetings attended. One, although it's up for final vote in front of the Alameda County Transportation Commission's General Body next week, the Projects Planning, Projects Planning Fiscal Committee that I serve on, for all of us who are super, you know, excited about highways, the Ashby Interchange has been recommended to the General Body to be approved for commencement of the environmental phase into a word of contract. And so for those who keep hearing about this project and wondering how long, the seven and a half million dollar contract for scoping and environmental, it is the first in all the projects that will be put through funding proposals this year. It's going to, it's a little bit ahead of all the other ones, which is good. It will be a four-year environmental scoping. And the current plan is that it will break ground in the summer to fall of 2021. So, and for those who aren't familiar with the project, I'd be happy to talk to you at some other point. And then the other thing is I attended the Alameda County Board of Supervisors Health Committee meeting on Monday morning yesterday, where they discussed affordable housing and implementation of Measure A1, which was the Affordable Housing Bond Measure for the county last year, and how it will intersect with the role that the city and the state will have in light of some new funding opportunities with housing. And just gave us a chance, Catherine Furpo was there as well, just gave us a chance to let our face be seen among a lot of people who are anxiously excited to find communities to partner with affordable housing. So it was a very positive event.
I attended the Alameda County Fire Department Fire Advisory Commission. I just wanted to note that on October 17th, at an upcoming meeting, we will be getting a report on the standards of coverage from consultant City Gate, who did that for all of the member agencies. So just be, we, we seem to be missing under Item 16, the list of upcoming significant agenda items. So I just wanted to mention that.
Anyone else? Future agenda item requests?
I've got one. We apparently have it in our municipal code that we have certain limits as to how much we feature council members on city channels, transmissions, publications and such. And I, can I mention the reason, Mr. Geena, as to why I would like to bring this back to council?
You'd like to give a short?
The short abbreviation, no discussion. So I am currently supervising an internship for a high school student who is doing a really interesting project where he is featuring some public art in our town. And he showed interest in actually talking to the artists who created the public art. And the, the first artist that he is doing a video feature on is our own mayor, Scott Donahue. And I think that it's going to be a really interesting piece that features not only Scott's work, but it will feature an interview with Scott and, and not as the, not just as the mayor, you know, Scott is one of, I consider him to be one of the pioneers of Emeryville, having moved here so long ago when it was a very different town. And I think it would, we would be remiss to not have the opportunity to, to show him off in this video production on ETV, on YouTube, on, and advertise that on our website. So that is the reason that I would like to bring this item forward.
I support.
I have a future agenda item that-
Wait, sorry, do I, well, do we have three? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, a future agenda item would be to put the microgrid grant application for October 3rd so that we can get city approval to apply to the grant.
Is that soon enough to do?
We are publishing the October 3rd agenda two days from now, so, on Friday. So.
Can you do it at the second meeting in October? Or is that too soon?
Well, it's, it's going to be too late to apply for the grant.
Oh, so it's got a deadline?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I don't know anything else.
Have we received the application, the MOU? Mr. Mayor?
We have.
We have?
Yes.
Okay. And it's been reviewed and?
Yeah. We need to discuss it.
So we have some staff work to do on that, but we could discuss that.
But can you get it as an agenda item? Or I'd like, you know, just, otherwise, we're, it's not going to be able, we won't be able to apply.
So perhaps what we could do is to schedule it as an agenda item, even though we may still be in discussion as to, as to the suitability.
Yes, that's true.
Right. We could still be doing some analysis, I guess. The only concern would be that we don't, we wouldn't have time by the deadline to put together a full analysis. But, so what we could do though is the analysis that is possible in that timeframe and go ahead and put it on the agenda. And there may be some late-breaking additional materials.
I support putting it on the agenda.
Yes.
That's your three.
Okay, of course I want it.
Yep, we're all good.
Yeah.
Any other agenda items?
Not at this time.
I believe that this meeting is adjourned.
No, go back to closed session.
All that is right.
Two, two items. So go to closed session, but I also would just ask that you adjourn with the folks who are affected by the Mexico City earthquake in Mexico.
Yeah. We're going to have another moment of silence.
That's what you wish.
Because they are, right now, that is three hours difference, or maybe four in the Caribbean.
Oh, in Mexico City, they are one hour different from us. And they had, on the 32nd anniversary of the largest earthquake ever recorded in Mexico, they had the second largest earthquake ever recorded in Mexicans, Mexico City. So the number of people who have been determined dead is already into the hundreds.
Hundred and forty plus.
Yeah. And so
Yeah.
It's a very hard day for people there, I think, in, in light of all the other, I mean, we've had Harvey and Irma and St. Croix is being hit right now on the west end by the outer wall of Hurricane Maria. And so it's like, a lot is going on, but I think our neighbors to the south deserve a little thought and a prayer perhaps.
I agree. So let's give that another moment of silence. Okay, now we should adjourn. Okay, now we should adjourn to finish our closed session.